All right, sorry for the delay everyone and welcome. Good evening, my name is Don Long and I am the Redwood Shores Community Association Board Secretary. On behalf of the Redwood Shores Community Association, our Board President Sue Nix, and the entire board, I want to extend a warm welcome to all of you for joining us at tonight's Canada Forum for District One Redwood City. RSCA is turning fifty this year with that comes a rich history of community advocacy for the shores. RSCA is chartered as a social advocacy nonprofit five oh one C four. And as such, we represent the entire Redwood Shores community of thirteen thousand residents and nearly five thousand households Redwood Shores. The Redwood Shores community is unique in that it is completely detached from me, Redwood City. And it's run by water and all three sides and only has two exits in and out with San Carlos and Belmont owning the land. Immediately bordering one oh one, that comes with some challenges for us as we have very little control over what happens in those areas. Therefore, it's also very important that candidates recognize and understand this uniqueness while representing us on the city council. So tonight, we have a chance to meet candidates and elected officials from the rest of Redwood City. After introductions, we'll introduce our two candidates for tonight's forum with some questions and answers. So let's begin with our VIP guests, we could briefly introduce themselves, Councilwoman Agiri and Borgans. Councilwoman Agiri, who wants to go first?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to everybody in the shores. I've been there many times and I appreciate everything that you do. And all the events that are happening there and also I appreciate the fact that the Redwood Shores Community Association is really part of Redwood City. I never forget that. From the time that we did the recycling water to now I serve on the Silicon Valley Clean Water Association and know how important all those things are for our shores. But at the same time, I want to continue to say that as district elected officials, we still represent the whole city. And I represent the issues and the events and things that are important to all of us. I know that I've been to many of your events that are very beneficial to all of our community members, including the Halloween events that I've been there for and the cleanup events. But also know that we are also a bigger community and that safety, housing, transportation, and children and youth are very important to me. So thank you for letting me introduce myself and I really look forward to continue to work with you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Borgans?
Hi and good evening, Redwood Shores residents and we're so excited that you're doing this tonight for your council district candidates. I am Janet Borgans. I've been on the city council for five years. And again, as what councilmember Gary just said, we represent all of Redwood City and that includes Redwood Shores, but we're really excited that you do have a uniqueness. And we celebrate that all the time because of that uniqueness. So I'm excited to hear what the questions are tonight and what concerns are. Because those will definitely be issues that will be coming to us. So I appreciate this and thank you, Don, for hosting and thank you everyone for being patient. Technology, we think we have it and we don't always have it, but you know, plan B, so thank you.
Thank you for that and then I am, thank you for reminding us that as city council members, you are serving all of Redwood City and that being said, you know, because this is a RSCA event and we'll represent the shores, some of the questions may be more centric to the shores. But I do want to recognize and acknowledge that our candidates and city council members are and will be representing the entire city and all its residents. So with that, I'm going to introduce all the candidates from the other parts of Redwood City. I'm all going to limit to your time to about two minutes. So first up is Chris Rasmussen.
Hello, good evening and thank you for inviting me to participate in this forum. My name is Chris Rasmussen and I'm running for the district seven seat in our city council. I've served as our Redwood City Police, Community Police Officer for the past twenty years and had the opportunity to work both as a volunteer and Redwood Shores community. During my time as a community police officer, I've attended many events in the shores. From the Halloween party to the annual Easter egg hunt to coordinating National Night Out, which is a big event. I've been to many Coffee with Cops over at the marketplace and I've done many adopt school programs in our schools in the shores. I even worked in the presidential detail, the vice presidential detail that was up in the shores in two thousand nineteen. As a volunteer, I've coached for PAL basketball with Ed Samper for school. And I participated in many levy cleanups that the shores had had. As a patrol officer, I've worked hard to keep your neighborhood and families very safe. In addition to my work on I've managed the police department's internationally recognized social media program and I served as the homeless outreach coordinator. My wife, Johan and I have begun our life together in Redwood City about twenty years ago. We've lived in the Friendly Acres neighborhood, Roosevelt neighborhood, and we currently live in the Farm Hill neighborhood. We're raising our two youngest children, Evan, who's in third grade and Emma, who is a sophomore. I currently serve as a commissioner on the San Mateo County Mental Health and Substance Abuse Recovery Commission and I chair the Children and Youth Committee. I'm also the executive director at Mount Carmel School. And as a parent, I've committed to working on climate change, housing, equity, common sense, police reforms, and transparency. It's been an honor and privilege for me to serve your community and I look forward to the opportunity to continue to serve as a member of your city council.
Great, thank you, Chris. Isabella? Isabella, you're still on mute.
I clicked.
There you go.
Name is Isabella Chu and I am a public health professional. And basically that's the study of what leads to long flourishing, healthy lives. And in a reduction in equity, so that you want everyone in the in the city to have a great life. And so there are a lot of policy things which I think we can do as city council to help people live their best life. My issues really center around housing. The increasing the availability and the variety and the affordability of housing. Transportation, I think for a lot of people who want to drive, the best way we're going to improve traffic is to provide meaningful alternatives to driving alone for those who don't want to drive. And dealing with the with climate change. So obviously Friendly Acres and the mobile home communities on the east side of one oh one are hugely impacted by flooding. I imagine that Redwood Shores is also impacted by this and so I'm determined to sort of implement the plan to deal with the flooding issues. Helping our schools have resources. I think this has been a particularly difficult time for the schools in some of the less resourced communities. So I really want to go after supporting them, families and children. And finally, I think in terms of supporting our most vulnerable communities, there's a lot of things we can do as city council. Things like rent relief, helping support our small businesses and giving giving small businesses more flexibility. My my interest in particular is obviously around housing and land use policy. And I really look forward to serving the entire city if I'm elected. Thank you.
Thank you. So I wish, I just want to make a caveat that there were requests from other candidates who could not be here for me to read their candidate statements. Unfortunately, we have so many candidates that it would be unfair for me to read anyone's candidate statement who is not present. So I'm going to have to skip that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our two two superstars for tonight. Nancy and Jeff, you will each have some time to also introduce yourself. If you could just start by please tell us about yourself and why you're running for city council. Now let's start with Nancy.
Great, thanks, Don. So I've, I want to thank everyone for being here and Don for for hosting us in the Redwood Shores Community Association, putting this together for the citizens. I'm Nancy Radcliffe. I was born in San Francisco, but I had the fortunate of living, growing up on the peninsula because my dad was commuter on Caltrain. So commuting is just a part of life for me. Even though I've only lived here over thirty years, my family history goes back for generations in Redwood City. And it's family history has it that my, one of my great uncles was a blacksmith in Redwood City. And actually the first one, and my grandfather was the CFO of the Portland Pacific Cement Plant out of Port. So I've had various career opportunities. I've dealt with many hats. I've managed small businesses. I've been, the latest was an interior design firm for twenty eight years. I've also had my own business on Main Street. I've also been a property manager, so I understand property management. I'm a renter as well as I own property in Menlo Park and am a property landlord. I've been involved in Redwood City for many, many years, many different multiple ways. So I'll only speak to a couple of them. I've been a longtime planning commissioner and was involved with our general plan and our extensive outreach for the downtown precise plan. And which did great community outreach, very proud of our community outreach on that. Twenty years on the Board of City Trees, we take care of Redwood City's urban forest. And we've brought over thirty eight hundred street trees into all the neighborhoods of Redwood City. In fact, I'm actually working on our next planting being down at our shores library because we've lost some trees in our parking lot down there. I've worked on the Library Foundation for multiple years. We brought to Redwood City the largest steam fest in the Bay Area that's STEM with art thrown in. We have Career Online High School so that people can continue to get their high school diplomas after due to life circumstances they weren't able to finish. Bridging the digital divide brings hotspots to our our citizens who have a challenge with wifi in their own homes. So this allows the children to be at home doing their homework. And I'm also a member of the Bear Island Aquatic Center, so I am a rower. You will often find me out on the water. So I am pretty very familiar with our waterways and how important they are to our environment as well as our health and wellbeing. I have a ninety six year old mother who's still with me fortunately. So I'm keenly aware of what seniors face as they go into their later years in life. I moved to the Redwood Shores for probably about a little over a year and a half ago. And I have to say, it has been so welcoming. It's just amazing. The difference, how welcoming everyone is friendly. I love seeing the kids out on the bikes and the roller skating. Just today, I was going out for a walk and passed a couple. He's loading stuff into the trunk of the car and he's like, do you want a bike? And I'm like, oh, you're so cute. That's sweet. And you know, I kept walking and she's like, no, he's serious. He brought it over for me. I don't want it. I'm not going to ride it. I'm afraid to ride a bike. Do you want a bike? So now I have this kind of vintage rustic bike that I owe him a six pack of beer for. So you know, that just kind of sums up the Redwood Shores community to me. So you know, I'm I'm passionate about our city and and what we have. It's it's a great, great place. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Jeff?
Don, thank you and thank you to the Redwood Shores Community Association. And thank all of you for joining us this evening and giving up part of your night. It's been a week full of candidate forums and other things and I promise, I think Nancy and I and Don, we are in agreement. We're not going to have a night like last night. Or else we'll all mute it in a heartbeat as we should be. So anyway, it's great to be here tonight and you know, I've been, I've grown up, I've had the opportunity to grow up here in the area and live in Redwood Shores for many years. My parents moved us, his family, my dad moved his family to Belmont when I was age seven. And they live up on Hallmark Drive and they're still there and lucky to have both parents still. Actually, today's dad's birthday and two years ago, we didn't think he was going to make it to one more birthday and we're very fortunate to still have him. Went to Fox, Ralston and Carlmont. And when I was at Ralston and Carlmont, I went to school with a number of classmates that lived here in Redwood Shores and their parents are still here. And so I remember when we made the choice to come to Redwood Shores, it was a President's Day holiday weekend in nineteen ninety five. We had just finished the bike ride. We were renting an apartment in Foster City and he says, let's take a drive out to Redwood Shores. And we did. And we saw all these homes under construction. We came to where we are now at the short California Bayside off of Shorewater is a Kaufman Road Development. And they said, no, well, and we're sorry, they were all sold by lottery. But there's a couple of homes that had fallen out of contract. We don't have any model homes, nothing. We don't even have any brochures, but they're framed up. If you want to walk over carefully, you can take a look at them. So my wife and I walked over. As an architect and she was a landscape architect, we were able to visualize what could be here. And in about an hour, we sat down and signed a purchase agreement to buy our home. So here we are twenty five years later. Part of the community, we raised our son and our daughter here in Redwood Shores. My son was the first graduating class out of Sandpiper. My daughter went to Ralston. And I've been serving on my HOA board since nineteen ninety six as the president of the board. And the board won't let me leave. Their comment to me is there's only two ways you can leave, Jeff, the HOA board. You have to move or you have to die. And I plan on not doing either one of those. I want to be here for a long time. I've served on the Redwood Shores Community Association Board as a director, treasurer, as the president. We helped with the fundraising for the collection and the new library. Supported the tax measures, both the parcel tax and the facility bond measures for the Belmont Shore School District. And as I mentioned, been president of my HOA since nineteen ninety six. I've served on the council for two terms then stepped away. And really what's brought me back is the current dynamic of public health crisis that we're in. No one ever planned for COVID. At least I don't think anyone planned for COVID. And the economic consequences and the financial recovery that's ahead of us. And I think my knowledge of the shores, my experience as an architect, as a construction manager, working together, was on the council during the oh eight, oh nine recession and worked with my council colleagues then to recover from the recession and put Redwood City on a path to be stronger and better at that time. And we're going to have to work hard together again. With regards to this, when we're over shores, there are some unique things out here. We have levees. We live in a flood zone. Our children go to different school districts. Our children go to a different high school. Our kids play in different youth leagues. There's a lot of different things that are different here, but we are part of a larger Redwood City and we need to work together. And I believe I can bring my expertise, my knowledge of the issues out here on the shores and the hard work and dedication to make those hard decisions. We're going to have to make very quickly because we don't know when this is going to be over. We don't know what's going to be next when the science says we need to pivot. And the one thing we need to do quickly as government is be able to pivot in particularly this environment where there's an emergency. Because we just don't know. It's brand new for all of us. And being a business person and someone who's working every day, keeping his staff safe across the state in seven offices. We have to learn to pivot quickly when new information comes to our attention. Be thoughtful and very deliberate in the decisions we make. So again, Don, thank you for moderating tonight. Look forward to the conversation. Thank you to Nancy for joining us. Hopefully we will not repeat what happened last night. I don't think we're going to do that. And it's great to see our council members and the other candidates here on the shores. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Nancy. I do want to make a disclosure and acknowledgement that there are a lot of broad issues out facing our communities right now from the digital divide to social justice to many inequities that exist. There is a plethora of questions I could be asking and but I will be focusing on key ones that are of interest to Redwood Shores. So please forgive me if I do not ask other questions that are meaningful to other parts of River City or the broader community at large. So with that, I want to, my first question is this. In my introductions, I mentioned that Redwood Shores is a unique neighborhood because of our geography and the general sentiment. And it's not always true, but the general sentiment is that Redwood Shores is often forgotten and overlooked by the city. Reflecting on this year's COVID-19 pandemic and Sheldon Place orders, forest fires, poor air quality, heat waves. And how all that intersects with city services, please describe your understanding of the social and community needs of Redwood Shores and how you will represent us on the city council. And since I had Nancy introduce yourself first, I'm going to have Jeff have the first question and then we'll alternate after that.
Sure, Don. And just to do a procedure check, two minutes or thirty seconds or five minutes? That's a long time, given some of the places we've been where we've only had thirty seconds to answer questions like that. So thank you. I don't plan to take the whole five minutes. There is a lot of truth to what you just shared in that question that Redwood Shores is often not looked upon as needing services, particularly the social services. Yet we do have a group of seniors here that do need services. We do have youth that need support. We do have a digital divide. We have technology challenges. And we can tie, dive into the technology challenges out in Redwood Shores perhaps later in the conversation. There needs to be a voice at the council to represent the shores. For example, and my hats off to councilmember Borgans and councilmember Ready for all the senior lunches they've served to the seniors. Yet, how many of those lunches have been served out here in Redwood Shores and to our seniors? When I stepped off the council in twenty eighteen, I advocated to the Senior Affairs Commission to go meet with the Community Association Community Association to talk about senior programs in the shores because there weren't any. And why should we have to ask for senior programs and youth services? We pay the same taxes. We actually pay more because we pay the same taxes that everybody else in the city. And yes, I agree completely that fire and police serve us equitably. But as a homeowner association board president, when there's a broken sidewalk, when there's a pothole, when there's a broken light fixture, we don't get to call the city. We have to take care of that ourselves as a board member or a board association or through our private contractor and we pay extra for that service. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, I went to school with classmates that lived out here on the shores. I was out in front of my yard the other day. And one of my classmates from middle school and high school was out in front pushing her mom in her wheelchair. She deserves services out here, just like every other part of Redwood City. And so having a voice on the social services side is very, very important for seniors who are growing old in their homes. Who aren't have the mobility, don't need to be shuttled downtown or to the community center in Fair Oaks or to the senior center. We have the facilities here. We have two facilities. We have the Sandpiper Community Center and we have the Redwood Shores Branch Library. And where I had advocated before that we should look for a fundraising effort to add in addition to the branch library. Given the COVID pandemic and what life may bring ahead of us, we should take a hard look at repurposing the cafe into a satellite senior center and some of the rooms. So that some of our seniors have their own place here on the shores to go to for classes, for lunch, for their own place to come and get together. In addition, what people also forget is that we have a housing co-op. In which the Redwood Shores Community Association serves on their board to make sure those residents are taken care of. They are just as deserving as residents on Redwood Shores or in Redwood City and other locations and other neighborhoods. And we need to make sure everyone is aware that there are low income families, low income youth that could use the support that other residents and other families get here in Redwood City. I'm happy to champion that if I'm so honored in November and I will champion that as I tried unsuccessfully previously. But it's a different day and given where we're going through the health emergency, it is time to speak up and correct those inequities.
Thank you, Jeff. Nancy?
Great, thank you, Don. Absolutely agree with everything that Jeff has just said. And I think Redwood City in general doesn't appreciate that we do have affordable housing units out here in Redwood Shores. And we do have citizens that need attention. They they really think of the shores as a very rich district and we're fortunate, some of our residents are well off, but we were versatile. We have everything. We have the Heron Court complex that which is affordable housing unit. We also have affordable housing units out in the Pescadero Apartments and people aren't aware of that. Since I've moved out here, I've noticed that the RSCA has really kind of filled the shoes that our parking rec department does on the mainland. They've done the trick or treating events. They've, you know, done the the holiday decorating contests and and those are things that usually are taken over by our parking rec department. So parking rec needs to also come out here, move out here with with their activities. Jeff's correct. The shores is kind of left out on its own. And the other thing that I've been hearing is that the shores residents are very concerned about the CERT program. Should a natural disaster happen? The CERT program, since it's been combined with the county, is not as active as it used to be. So I think we really have to rev up our our interest in getting that getting retention from them. So, so yes, we are, we are a different breed out here and we do need, we'd need the same services. And I'm very familiar with the other side of the mainland does have. So we need it out here. Thank you. Thanks, Don.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Jeff. And just for clarification, you know, since you mentioned the city population, at the last census count based on the ACS, approximately seventeen percent of of Redwood Shores is sixty five and older. And a significant number are seventy five and older, really older, older adults with very limited mobility. So yes, advocacy in that area is critically needed, especially when meals on wheels are not coming into the shores and we don't have senior services on the shores. So thank you for bringing those issues up and advocating and lifting that up. Nancy, you brought up something that kind of leads into my next question. So similar to the first question, because we are on a virtual island, what do you think needs to change in order for Redwood Shores to not be forgotten during emergency responses and support, especially if and when a major quake or natural disaster strikes? If you could also speak to the pandemic responses and heat waves, that would be great as well.
Okay.
So Nancy, you get to go first.
So I'm fortunate to live out on Baltic Circle, so I feel I know it was built after the eighty nine earthquake, so everyone can come to my house because I think we're pretty rock solid out here. I'm not, just kidding. We, we are definitely need a plan for an emergency because we are by ourselves out here. We are fortunate enough to have the fire station, but as I mentioned before, our CERT individuals are not as organized as they used to be. They're not feeling like they're getting the attention that they would like. There was a CERT trailer out at the fire station. I believe it's kind of under maintenance. So that needs to be taken care of, but it's, we also need to have a major evacuation plan should we need to do that. Which every resident should know about and the pilot is fabulous about getting the word out. They just did a emergency prepared kit on in the latest pilot, which is is wonderful. I think everyone would wish that they had a pilot magazine coming into their mailbox and not just the people in the shores. So I think we need a major disaster plan for out here. And I didn't write down all of your questions, Don, so I think I'm missing something.
Sure, let me, let me repeat the question again. So it is related to the emergency response and basically what will you do while if you are elected to be on the on the council to make sure that we're not forgotten during emergencies. And I think, you know, you and Jeff have brought up good points about the shores being on landfill and we're prone to liquefaction and we have levees all around the shores.
Right, right. Well, and very important levees. Those keep us nice and safe and sound and we need to keep then in tip top shape, which is another subject, but as far as a natural disaster, I think we need to come up with a definite plan. We should have stations throughout the shores where people can meet if need be. It'd be great to have a phone tree so that people can communicate with each other and not not depend on the city, which clearly we found out that we can't depend on the city. So I think going forward, I would definitely promote us having our own plans.
Great, thank you, Nancy.
Thanks.
Jeff?
Thanks, Don. If I heard your question correctly, it all starts with communication and planning. In many ways, while there are over thirty HOAs, it's also a great place to plan and start to organize at a local neighborhood level, putting a plan together. Because everyone knows each other. I mean, I do. Because everyone knows each other. I mean, I do a monthly newsletter to my HOA every month, even twelve times a year. I think I've done over two hundred newsletters during my time as a HOA president. And that the board has a responsibility to take care of their neighborhood and to put that plan together in place. But that's the lowest level of the tree. The city through its CERT coordinator needs to help all of us, all the neighborhoods across the city, all seventeen neighborhood associations, put a plan together for their neighborhoods. Because that's part of the process and part of what Mayor Bain and Mayor Seabird started when reinvigorating the neighborhood associations. That is the most local neighborhood centric way of putting people together. Now, as Nancy mentioned, through the budget process, that position has been reallocated back to the county. And that position isn't seem to be working out very well. It seems to be missing some pieces or some parts. Unfortunately, I don't have any visibility to see if it was the right decision or not to move it to the county or if that's a performance issue, a training issue. But that's an issue that the council, if I'm part of it, we need to revisit. Because we have learned through the public health crisis, through the wildfires, through the air quality issues. Heaven forbid, the swarm of earthquakes doesn't get any more severe. You know, we need to have a plan to get through any natural disaster or any man-made disaster. We talk about the natural disasters. A man-made disaster can happen too that isolates the shores with one or two of the exits out of here. The second piece is, as Nancy indicated, communication. One of the the parts about how Redwood Shores always sometimes feels left out. On one level, it is unique to the shores. On another level, I can argue most of the neighborhoods feel left out. And the Safe Streets Program was put together, and I saw the staff report about the Safe Streets Program ago. I wonder how come Bridge Parkway was picked? And lo and behold, there wasn't a lot of communication with the community association about why Bridge Parkway was selected for the Safe Streets Program. The neighborhood associations are there for a reason, and the city isn't using them to their fullest capacity. What do the neighborhoods need? What is on their mind? What can we do to improve the quality of life in those neighborhoods? And conversely, here's some important information to share with the neighborhood. And that really needs to be revisited about how we communicate across the city. And it can't be just relying on technology. We saw about a few minute delay getting started this evening. That is not civic engagement. Social media is not civic engagement. Going to the extravaganza, going to the Halloween parade, showing up at Santa and the Shores, going to where families and people get together, at least pre-COVID, is civic engagement where you can sit, share information, but more importantly, listen to what's on people's mind and what worries them. And only when we do that can we then get better. And so the communication piece is really, really important in my mind. And that we just can't rely on technology to solve it all. We gotta get off our chairs, get in our shoes and walk around and listen. And then share information consistently, regularly, and the old age, at least three times over before people realize the information is important. We need to do a better job and and I don't, I don't even go in part about how we communicate with a multilingual population. Because, you know, I'll just say that we do have a large API community here in the shores. And I'm a strong advocate for being able to communicate in multiple languages. And today, we only focus on English and Spanish, but I advocate that we have to also communicate in Chinese because of our large and what the census will tell us after this year, growing API community here in the shores. Thanks, Don.
Thank you both of you for for your very thoughtful responses. And to Jeff's point, Redwood Shores is approximately, I would say about thirty-eight, forty percent Asian and growing. And recognizing also that Redwood City has a very large Latino population that are oftentimes underserved and under recognized as well. So I want to lift those up as equity issues. And thank you for pointing out the many events that RSCA hosts because those are really good opportunities for the city as well as the county to really come in and do surveys or outreach opportunities for all of those families. With that, we're going to move on to the next question. So we're facing unprecedented times, both state and local jurisdictions are facing unprecedented budget deficits and unfunded liabilities are making matters worse. How are you going to deal with the massive unfunded liability in Redwood City while maintaining quality of services and public safety for all of Redwood City? So we're faced with unprecedented budget deficits and unfunded liabilities. The intersectionality with maintaining services and public safety. Who do I go last? I think it was Jeff. Are you one last?
I think I went last, so I get to go first. Nancy, don't you want to go first on this one?
I think, yeah, I think Nancy's turn to go first on this one.
No, no, no.
Right?
Doesn't matter. Well, I mean, there's just the two of us. Like, I'm having to go first. It's okay or whatever.
Go for it.
Don, that's such a true statement. And I wish one of us here or anyone could say when this is going to be over so we can put a plan in place to figure out how to recover financially. I've always argued with friends that every week, every day that goes on, the longer the recovery is going to take and the bigger the hole is going to be. And and that's just the true dynamic of where we're headed. I mean, we look at San Francisco, who just, I think, got into the orange category and their restaurants are being allowed to open up twenty-five percent. How do you put a business plan together to run a profitable restaurant on twenty-five percent capacity? It just doesn't work. Redwood City, from a service standpoint, is a service organization. Seventy percent of what the city does provides services. And while there may be hopes for pension relief from Sacramento and a federal bailout from Washington DC, when I was talking to a chief of staff or a congress member, his comments were, that's just aspirational. So we're going to have to deal with the challenges ahead on our own and work together. We're going to have to work together that like we did in oh eight and oh nine. And we're going to have to make some hard decisions, and we're going to have to do them together. And so what that means to me is, number one, we have to work with our labor partners. Labor is the bulk of our budget, so we have to work with all of our labor groups to see what we can do together to recover together. Number two, there are probably going to be, if not highly likely, be reductions in services. But we may have to look at providing services in a different way. One of the things that Redwood City does a great job of is contracting out its services to other cities. And we may need to step that up and look even more broadly than just other cities. What I'm talking about are things like HR, payroll, fleet services. And we have to add public works to it. Maybe we have to to start asking school districts. School districts are not immune to what we're going through at the city level. Why shouldn't we, if we have an stellar, you know, public works maintenance group, contract services out to school districts that can provide services at lower cost and scale up? On the revenue side, it starts with, number one, keeping our businesses thriving here in Redwood City. Small businesses and larger businesses. I stopped by Knob Hill the other day to get a haircut. Many of you know Supercuts just opened. I looked in, didn't see anybody there. Opened the door was open. I asked the two salon stylists there, are you open? And their comment was, yes, for the third time. They opened in January, they closed in March, they reopen, they closed, and now they reopen again. That is just miserable for a new business to try to run a business, pay their rent, pay your staff. So we need to help and support our small businesses. One of the magical things, though, about Redwood City is the diversity of our job base, and we need to cherish that and celebrate it. I like to tell the story about a small startup company called Shutterfly that started in Redwood City, in Redwood Shores. They're a large company. They were growing. They were a signature away from leaving Redwood City. On a Friday afternoon, the CEO had a new lease on his desk for his signature to sign for new space and leave Redwood City. He put his pen down and said, no, we'll have to figure out something else to do. I want to stay here. And that's what we need to do to keep our businesses. And and hopefully, council member Giddy, council member Borgans, the other council members and our staff are all over this. We have another startup right now in Redwood City that is looking for a lot of new space, a lot of new space, so that they can grow. We need to be all over them so that they can stay here and keep good-paying jobs in Redwood City. I do know of other cities in the Bay Area that would be dying to have them relocate their business to their city. So we need to celebrate who we have. We need to keep who we have, small and large, and provide opportunities for startups to grow and expand in our city so that we can generate new revenue. As retail, sales, sales tax, TOT from our hotels, those are going to take a long time to recover. So property tax is pretty stable. We're lucky here on the shores that housing prices are relatively stable. But the other two revenue sources are going to take a long time to recover. And so it's about services and how we can redefine delivery, how we partner with our labor partners, how we partner with other cities and school districts to contract services to them so that we can maintain our workforce, how we retain our businesses, and how we provide space for new businesses to, or existing businesses to grow and stay in Redwood City.
Thank you, Jeff. Nancy?
Super. Thank you, Don. So Jeff is absolutely right. We need to continue to grow. We have for many, many years been contracting our services out. And I think we will continue to do that. I was just talking with a friend in another city about their fire department, and they're not happy with who they're contracting out and are looking at Redwood City. So we will continue to contract out and have these great relationships with our neighboring cities. One of the great things that during every recession, Redwood City has been pretty stable and been able to to bounce back and take the hits. And that's because we have a very diverse economic portfolio. We've got the port, we've got biodiversity, we've got some of our big computer companies here. So we're not a one-industry city, which is really important so that we have the ability to bounce back when things kind of hit one industry. We're not dependent on that to support the rest of the city. Developers still want to develop here, and we need to take advantage of that. They still see the potential in Redwood City. We've got some great projects in the pipeline. We've got the gatekeeper process, which hopefully all those projects will go forward. They'll bring a lot more housing, a lot more jobs, a lot more revenue. So we need to keep the process going because people still see the value of being located in Redwood City. I also think that we should employ, not employ, use the use of our citizens a little more. Our citizens would love to volunteer to help, whether it's maybe we need one more staff down at the library so that the library doesn't have to cut its hours or with all our CERT volunteers, they they're jumping at the bit to be helpful. So we need to really tap into that resource of volunteerism because that is something that makes us a great city and our citizens very proud. So it's, it's going to be really interesting as we go forward. City Council is very smartly looking at the budget every three months because we don't know what's coming down the road. None of us know, and we don't know how long this is going to last. So being flexible is always very important and being able to turn on a dime. So there we go.
Great. Thank you for that. So the next question is really an extension of the the last one. So there are two issues that many residents in Redwood Shores feel strongly about. First is the traffic and speeding along the Redwood Shores thoroughfares. And the second one is our branch library remaining closed while many other county branch libraries have reopened. What are your suggestions and ideas for addressing these two issues? So Nancy, I'm going to have to go next since Jeff was.
We're going to say this. So traffic, we've got the two main arteries in Redwood Shores. We're not going to do speed bumps because that's, our fire engines won't take that. But there are some interesting things that we could do for slowing traffic down. One of them is called road diets, and you actually slightly reconfigure our roadway. You narrow the lanes, narrowing the lanes automatically slows people down a bit. That would give us a little more room for a larger bike lane, which will get more people out on their bikes. And I noticed a lot more people are biking these days with COVID, so that's, that's not a bad thing. Also, graphics. There's been a study shown that sometimes if you paint some great graphics, like in an intersection, people will slow down. So I think there's some innovative ways that are coming to the forefront of how we can easily slow traffic down in a safe way, subtle, so that people aren't really complaining. Everyone would complain if there was a speed bump, if we could do speed bumps. So I think that's a couple of the things that we can think about. You know, it's not an easy solution. If it was an easy solution, it would have already been taken care of. So I think there's different ways that we can just try it. Maybe we'll try one, one way on Redwood Shores Parkway and another on the Marine Parkway. So who knows? It's, it's, but it's also something that we should do some public outreach and see what our citizens would like to try. So, and as far as the library, I sit on the library foundation board. And it pains my heart that the Redwood Shores Library is closed. And I would like to see, even, we could do some more programs here at the library. They have book pickups at the main library. Well, let's have book book pickups at least once a month out here at the shores. It doesn't always have to be at the main library. So I think, and here again, if we need a volunteer to do Book Pickup Day at the shores, you know, I'm sure we would have some citizens who would love to be greeting car full of kids, getting their new books. So for their new CDs or videos or games. And we can pull from all of our libraries in Redwood City. We have four great libraries. So there's no reason that it all has to go out in the main library, especially since the shores is over by, over in a different direction. So, yeah. Now it's Jeff's turn.
Thank you, Nancy.
You know, I'll work backwards on the two questions. So with regard to the library, I think part of it, I think I alluded to part of the the answer to how to open the library or open the facility more than it is being closed. And that's really to repurpose the building into multiple uses so that it's not a single-use building. It should be a senior center, it should be a library, it should be a community meeting room. It could be, you know, and if we have to, and I believe it already is, Parker Verrick is already contracting out for some senior programming. And let the contractor use and open up the building. But we have to break out of those silos, and so using our facility assets, because they're there. And the community here in Redwood Shores was a fundamental driver of that building. Is open it up and let other uses occur, so it's just not a library. It could be a learning pod. I mean, with distance learning and letting, you know, having families struggle, being at home with their kids versus working, make it a learning pod, you know, make it a multi-dynamic building so that can be opened up for the community so it's used rather than closed most of the time. And so we have to do all of those things and find out what fits the best. And it may even be requiring finding a private partner to help operate and open up that building if they can bring resources and programs to the building that the community wants and needs. So that's how I would say we've got to explore how we open up our facilities and use them, rather than having everybody stuck at home. You know, air quality, I think over the Labor Day weekend was not only over a hundred degrees, but air quality was over three hundred. Those are facilities that seniors that don't have air conditioning, that need places where they're going to cool off or plug in their medical devices. or plug in their medical devices if there's a rolling blackout, they need a place to go. And and those are buildings that they can go to if we open them up. With regard to slowing down traffic, I think what we see on Redwood Shores Parkway and Marine Parkway are legacy issues. Marine Parkway is a legacy of how traffic was designed and designed roadways, wide, open lanes. And and what that does is it causes people to see, wow, there's a lot of space here. I can go fast. I remember Mike Quatmore, who succeeded me on the River Shores Community Association as president. One of his first complaints came from the community. He got us, the resident got a speeding ticket for going about fifty miles an hour down Marine Parkway at four thirty in the morning and got pulled over. He goes, what's the problem? There's nobody out here. That doesn't beg the question of why he did it. It's the rules and the laws. And those people that suffer are our families, our kids, and the geese that people don't seem to stop for when they're walking across the street. So narrowing the lanes, as Nancy mentioned, road diets, those are always hard conversations to have with the community. The community association and the residents need to be a part of that. More landscaping, more art, as Nancy said, I mean, for our crosswalks. Excuse me, this is the second forum in two days and we've got one more tomorrow. Our crosswalk should be art exhibits as and people will slow down. So there's a lot of different things we can do to slow down. But we have to learn that we are a community here of, let's say, thirteen thousand people that need to look to take care of each other. Because the only reason you're out here is either work or you live here, or you're visiting work or visiting someone you live here. This 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 is no thoroughfare here to get to the East Bay or to the Foster City or to anywhere else. So we have to learn to own our neighborhood. We have to learn to own our community and so that we can be safe together. So those are my thoughts on those two two subjects.
Great. Thank you to both of you for for those very very thoughtful questions. And it really brings up a lot of communication and community engagement issues. So the next question is kind of related to that, but it's a much broader issue. So events of the recent past have highlighted inequities and social justice issues that exist in our society. And the issues of but of police budgets have come up throughout the nation. Given the diversity of River City, what are your thoughts on the intersectionality of social justice policing and law enforcement budgets? So this question is going to go to Jeff, since we're alternating again.
Don, thank.
Am I messing this up?
No, no, I think.
Oh, Jeff, you're right, Jeff.
Yeah. And and Don, thank you and the community association, because these questions are not thirty second answers. And and so giving us the time to dive into, I really appreciate it. Because it is really hard to be watching the clock and say, I got thirty seconds left to answer this. There's no question in my mind that there are institutional and systemic issues with regard to social justice policing. And and it's even broader than that. And it's really sad that it took several tragedies this year for the Black Lives Movement to come to the forefront, to surface this at a broader level. With regard to policing, I think our police department does a fairly good job. It's a people business. They need to deal with those that aren't performing well and moving on. There are some reforms that are needed. With regard to their budget, there are going to be challenges. We talked about earlier in the budget question. And I do not see any way that the budgets are going to be increasing. There are going to be very, very hard conversations about how we manage and maintain the integrity of the city's budget. Because one of the things the city can't do is print money and it can't be in deficit. It has to be a balanced budget every year. One of the interesting things about policing that Harris Rogers, the previous president of the Community Association, and I talked about is maybe there's a role for technology. The Redwood Shores, at least Harris had talked to me about, is there a way we might be able to use cameras? And that's a bigger community conversation regarding privacy and access to information and things like that. But that is a question that I asked when we were interviewing for the police chief to make sure that he was open and receptive to the use of technology to help with policing and crime solving. Another question that I raised with the chief and one that I'm insistent on is that there is diversity in the police department as well as the city's workforce. Let's start with the police department first. I think that having a diverse workforce, both gender and culturally, makes the police department more accessible, more knowledgeable, more culturally aware of the different people in our community. And that's something I advocate for and I'm a strong believer in, whether it be police, fire, or city workforce. If you go on my website, I've taken the pledge that we need to have a workforce that looks like our demographics to look like the numbers that you've shared with us earlier in your presentation, Don. With regard to the social justice issue, there are definitely institutional and systemic barriers to civic engagement. You know, as I advocated for having at least some communication written from the city in Mandarin and Chinese. I was told by the city, there are not enough of you. So when is there going to be enough of us to be able to communicate to the API community, to the Chinese community and their native language? When are we going to start to take a look at who the council appoints to the boards and commissions and committees? And see what the candidate pool looks like, what our pipeline looks like building and things like that. So that they're not always residents from the other side of Redwood City and that there's more geographic representation. One of the things that I've worked on in my last two years was I was a co-founder and I'm the treasurer of the San Mateo County API Caucus to raise the API voice in San Mateo County. It's the largest cultural demographic in San Mateo County at over thirty percent. Yet we are often stereotyped as the model minority and the quiet voice that doesn't want to raise a ruckus. We need to work together across all communities, white, black, Latinx, API, to really take a hard look at the social justice issues, the cultural issues, the workforce issues, to really break down these barriers, to get everyone involved, because we're all in this together. Because we can't keep being in different silos and we can't keep people in different silos. So hopefully, I've covered all the parts of your question, Don. Did I miss anything?
No, I think your your response is adequate. It it it, there is no particular point I was trying to see if you could respond to. It's just the intersection intersectionality of those three areas. So thank you for your response.
Appreciate it.
Nancy?
Um, you're done. So there is a social inequity. And I am so saddened that it is actually worse. And Jeff mentioned this the other night. It's, I didn't expect this of here in the Bay Area in California. So I I think all of us have had our eyes wide opened. That we still have a lot of issues. We're not as good as we had hoped we were. As far as the police is concerned, that is a big part of the budget of the city. And I think the police are shackled with some issues that they're really not prepared to deal with. They have to deal with mental health and drug abuse. And that's not what our officers went in to that profession to do. We need to look at partnering with the county. The county is the one who provides the social services. They have the mental health programs. They have the drug abuse programs. That's the function of the county. It's not the function of the city. And we need to look at partnering with the county so that we have a holistic approach to all of these problems. We also need to look at partnering with some of our nonprofits who are very versed in these issues. You know, I don't think that it's fair to send a a police officer into a domestic violence issue. He, they don't have the background for that. But you also can't send just a social worker by themselves into that issue. So do we partner up and have a police officer and a social worker responding to those calls? So we have to, I think we have to really look at this in a much more holistic approach and realize the strengths of different departments and the weaknesses of different departments. We're fortunate that we do have a police chief that grew up in Redwood City. So he knows Redwood City. He knows who we are and what we stand for. And so I I'm I'm very positive on in that frame. I would love to see some of our officers on bikes. We we had that for a while. They're not out there anymore. You know, what happened to the beat cop? You know, they say that studies show that the most approachable way for a policeman to be out there is on horse. Now, I don't see Redwood City adding a stable to our city budget. But we have to think about how are, how can they be approachable? We need to take down that barrier of fear and, you know, that they're they're the bad people. Because they really, they they went into that profession to protect citizens. That's what drove them to that field in life. So let's, let's enhance it. Let's make it work. I also, as far as inequity, I think one thing that we've been talking about, you know, none of us were really in favor of district elections, but it turns out that it's certainly bringing a lot more versatile candidates to the forefront. And I think that's going to be something that as we get used to this, it's going to be an advantage for us. So, yeah, we've got, we've got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of work to do and a lot of communication. I think both Jeff and I have said this multiple times already this evening. It's really about talking to each other and communicating. Once you get to know someone, they're not scary anymore. So I think a lot more breaking of bread needs to happen.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both of you for that thoughtful responses as well to that question. So this one is kind of related to communication as well, but it's going to be around cross jurisdictional communication. So the context of my question is this, in the fifty something year history of River Shores, we've been challenged by the isolation we've experienced, especially around our schools. I think Jeff mentioned earlier, the special facilities district parcel, financial or parcel tax that we we post on ourselves. That was twenty five million dollars to build a new school. And that's because River Shores is part of Belmont in terms of the school district. Funding hasn't always been equitable in a lot of ways, and it required extensive intervention by the city of Redwood City in helping to negotiate and navigate some of those pitfalls. Given that the relations have improved dramatically over the decade or so between River Shores, Belmont, and River City, what do you think are the roles that you do see for yourself relating to education River Shores? And in particular, continued cross jurisdictional collaboration between River City, City of Belmont, and Belmont River Shore School District? And I believe this question goes to Nancy first.
Great. Thank you. Our, unfortunately, our schools have always been challenged. And I think actually, the Belmont Redwood Shores District is a little better off than the mainland school district. So, but we always need to keep the communication open, understand what's going on with our schools and our kids. And it's a it's, I think our, having the partnership of some of our Redwood Shore citizens on the school board, the Belmont Redwood Shore School Board is extremely important because that keeps, keeps the conversation going as far as what we need. Let's see. It's a, it's an ongoing discussion. So thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Jeff?
I I think that you start with number one, communication, as you alluded to in your opening part of your question. And part of what Redwood City did when I was on the council was traditionally, there was a two plus two. You know, two council members, two school district members. But when we started in the, I think it was around sixteen, if not earlier, there were two plus two plus twos. Belmont council members, Redwood City council members, Belmont School District trustees to talk about the issues and how we can work together to support each other. And it has helped some of the way because it's open channels of communication. But we still have a long ways to go because we are still, at least the families out here in River Shores, go to a different school district. It was a huge benefit when Michael Milliken was our superintendent. And one of the things that I think many of us that were involved in the hiring process for them for Michael was the stressing that there needed to be greater communication and participation with the River Shores community. And he lived up to his commitment when he was hired. He had the monthly article and the pilot. He made sure that the council knew what was going on. He tried to make sure everybody was involved to the extent he could. And with the new superintendent, expectations are, if not higher, at the very least, the same to what Michael had in terms of communicating. There's still a lot of work to do with Belmont Council and the River City Council and the Belmont River Shore School District. But I think we are a lot along the path there to getting there. What I do want to see happen, and it's something that I've raised, is that Redwood City twenty twenty needs to be a participant to support our low income families out here on the shores. A lot of funding from the community partners that go into River City twenty twenty serve a lot of the families and the the youth in the Redwood City areas, particularly from the Acres and North Fair Oaks and the Latinx community. But there are deserving families and deserving youth here of that same support. And it started when the city council began the conversation about cannabis and youth education programs. And the focus was on the River City School District. And I said, well, what about Belmont Redwood Shores? Our youth out here deserve the same education about cannabis if we're going to open up cannabis in Redwood City. So there's a wedge to open that door, but we need to make the door wider and more inclusive so that both school districts and all families of all income levels feel supported by both city councils and by all the residents that are in Redwood City. The other part of it is that we did need to figure out how to do mutual fundraising. I mean, one of the great COVID fundraising efforts was Save the Music. That didn't happen this year because of COVID. And who knows how long this is going to continue or what next year's program might look like. But we need to work together about fundraising, budgeting, and support for each other. Because the school districts have the same financial challenges that the cities do. And we have to find a way to work together. I mean, one of the interesting questions out there, the San Mateo County is not a huge geographic county. There are differences between the Bay, let's just say, between one oh one and two eighty and the coast side. But why are there twenty cities? Why are there twenty three separate school districts? Can't there be greater shared services at the very least between cities and school districts? So that we don't have forty three C I Os or, you know, forty three grounds and public work staff? Can't we collaborate further and contract services to each other to maintain the quality of life and support for what's most important, our residents, our families, and our children? And those questions need to, those conversations at the very least need to begin now. Because this is not a V curve to recover. This is going to be a U. And we need to begin those conversations now to get on the right path, whatever that path looks like. Or to at least run the scenarios about what a path might look like to getting better.
Thank you both of you for those for those responses. And just for a point of clarification, Belmont River Shores is the lowest funded scooter of all San Mateo County. We receive approximately less than nine thousand dollars in per student funding. And the parent community in both Belmont and River Shores are contributing to over ten percent of the district's budget through donations. And so to Jeff's point about coordinated fundraising is going to be really important. That's one of the misnomers about River Shores and particularly our school district, because that is flush with money. It is not. We are strapped for cash. We are allocating by our. We are strapped for cash, we are allocating by um our costs and expenses have only been going up. And it's 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 gonna take a lot of of collaboration between all of those three entities to really recognize the issue and really lift it up to the way it needs to be lifted up. So my next question is not on on my question list, but I do wanna lift it up a little bit more. And that's because both of you have spoken extensively about the need now and the need to support our youth in River Shores and our families that are somewhat disadvantaged, and so it really relates to the library. I think there's a lot of um angst within River Shores, especially family members and and children that are very anxious to have our library open. So the question is, what is what is it gonna take to um get our libraries reopened sooner than later? And um get those services up and running, and what ideas you have for creative solutionings that would have a positive impact on children that are distance learning and just supporting the overall community as a whole? So um I think the last question went to Nancy, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jeff this time for the first response.
Sure, Don, thank you. Again, I think I I hinted at maybe in one of my previous answers, is that we're gonna we're gonna have to think differently about our library. We're gonna think, we have to think of it as a place where a lot of different activities can happen, not just a library. It but a learning pod, a senior center, a cultural center. I I can guarantee you that as we 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 haven't even talked about it in this conversation that we know that renters are having a tough time, we know that maybe homeowners are with mortgages. We know businesses are having a tough time paying rent. We haven't even talked about the challenges that nonprofits have in paying their rent and keeping their programs going. So we have two physical assets, two community centers that we should take a look at, how do we repurpose so that we can get them open? So that we can partner with maybe a nonprofit who's looking to pay, you know, let's call it you know, pay their rent because the landlord just raised their rent on them. And how they can help keep and and provide staffing for a person in the library. We have to really think very differently about how we use our buildings and how we deliver services. I can easily see at the River Shore Branch Library that we can maybe rent the big meeting room for a nonprofit program, because nonprofits are looking to put on their own programs, they're looking for space. Two dollars a square foot is not unreasonable, that's what some of them are paying right now, but their rents are going up. Or at least they were, or they're being renegotiated because people are looking for maybe cannabis coming into Redwood City. Uh, and those proceeds, that revenue then can help support the library staff or the the of staff person to open up the library. The cafe can be repurposed with a meeting room into a branch senior center. And that we may either partner with Belmont for services and programs or partner with the private sector. And then we haven't even touched philanthropy. Philanthropy can play a big role, and Nancy serves on the Library Foundation, which does a lot of philanthropy to how to open up facilities and provide resources to low income families and our youth. And I know because of different boards and and things that I've served on and that I've supported. There are a number of foundations that are dedicating their philanthropy to families and children. And so getting a good grant writer on board or contracting with a grant writer are are great ways to be able to find resources, particularly financial resources, to open up our facilities.
Thank you, Jeff, Nancy.
It, thank you so much, um absolutely, we have, we have these buildings that are sitting being unutilized. Um, just walked by Sandpiper today and it's it's dark, it's like, it could be so many things happening. The distance learning would would be one of them to give parents a little relief so that they can actually focus on maybe um uninterrupted focusing on work. Uh, as Jeff mentioned, I am on the Library Foundation, and we take uh great pride in the projects that we do for the library. We are looking at redoing the interpretive center at the Shores Library. And one of the things that things that we did is we brought in some high school kids from design tech and said, how can we make this better? So maybe we should look at not the usual partners also. I mean, we do need to look at the usual partners, but also the other partners. Kids at design tech, I mean, they are smart kids thinking outside of the box. How can we utilize that brain power and um get some more creative things happening? But absolutely using the buildings that um are underutilized. And once again, volunteers, we have such a large community that is passionate about their community. And not only is volunteering make you feel good that way, but it's gonna get you out of your house during this COVID thing. And interacting with people at a distance, um you know, we all it's gonna be a fact of life for a while, we're we're in this COVID thing for a while, so it's it's here to stay. Unfortunately, I think for at least another year. Um, so let's but let's utilize the creative brain power that we have not only in our nonprofits, as Jeff mentioned, but also other aspects, design tech. We have a really smart population in Redwood Shores, I'm sure they can come up with some other great ideas. You know, let's be forward thinking outside the box, let's let's go for it.
Great, thank you very much, I think if if there's a way to help um expedite the library being reopened, I think that's gonna that's gonna bring a lot of appreciation from the River Shores community. We we may have time for one more question, if you don't mind going over or staying a little bit later, uh maybe ten minutes, I could ask one more question.
Sure.
Yeah, great. Yeah.
So um this question is relating to more of the general plan. So there's been a lot of interest in the in the River City general plan and development opportunities in both the downtown area and sites across the freeway. What do you have thoughts and priorities of a future River City growth and land use?
I bet you're gonna ask me first, right?
Um, you know what? Jeff had the yes, so Jeff had the last question. Nancy, you get this question.
Um, so as you know, I sit on the planning commission, I've been on the planning commission for nineteen years. Jeff also served with me on the planning commission for a while, so um Jeff and I are, you know, used to um working on projects together. Um, on on the planning commission, we really worked hard for our downtown precise plan with the whole goal of that plan to focus on downtown. I'm uh I'm pro-development, there's, we've had a lot of development for some people, too much development. But um we've had a lot of development, and I think it's done nothing but improve our downtown. But I believe our citizens like to keep it pretty centered. I'm also pro-neighborhood, we wanna keep our neighborhoods to the character that that they are, we don't want um big business encroaching on it, so there's a fine line between keeping our neighborhoods in the neighborhood context and our keeping our downtown um our downtown. We're now looking at um doing a central plan, which will expand the perimeter of the downtown precise plan. Um, but businesses create a synergy and they wanna be together. They wanna um interact together, they wanna be in the same place, so I think that's really um also works in our favor, you'll you'll look at probably most of the development plans that are in the in the pipeline, and they are centered in our downtown. Not to say other things cannot happen outside of our downtown, there's, we always need to look at the opportunities that are coming forward. But I think concentrating our our businesses downtown is really important.
What about the other areas of River City um across the freeway?
Um, you know, there is certainly development opportunities out there. One of the things that Redwood City is also looking at as the land that the city already owns and putting in some more parks, and if you really look at how some of the um land lines up. Um, we can almost do a linear park out out to the bay. You know, if if you, I row on the water, so you can actually row up Redwood Creek past Veterans Avenue if the tide is right. And you could get out of your boat and get into downtown Redwood City, very few people know that. Very few people know that there's actually a water-based bay trail. Everyone's familiar with the land-based bay trail, but there's also a water-based bay trail. How great would it be to connect our waterfront with our downtown? And really bring the energy that we have in the port and that industrial section and really connects our neighborhoods, really be able to walk from City Hall all the way down down to the port and watch the ships come in. Some people don't even realize that we're a deep-water port. So, you know, I think bringing that to the forefront, what we have, we just had that uh fire up at Fisherman's Wharf a few months ago, which was devastating to the businesses up there. We've got fishing boats, a fishing boat right now, I bet more will come, that come down to our port on the weekends to sell off of the boat. Let's let's connect it all, let's let's um, you know, just, there's so many opportunities for um expanding our outreach in every part of the city, yeah.
Thank you, Nancy, Jeff.
Um, let me see if I can remember the two parts of the question, so let me start with downtown and the central plan. I think the downtown precise plan is a great example of a lot of community work over twenty years and how to put mixes of uses together near transit. Uh, the success of is that we had assumed through the EIR process, we named the city and the planning commission and city council that maybe twenty seven percent of the workers and the people that live downtown would not use a car. And through the traffics and circulation study that was done a few years ago, the city was proven wrong. That number was north of forty percent. So getting people out of their cars, having housing, jobs, and transit within walkable distance of each other is a huge success to do with climate change, quality of life, the vibrancy of a neighborhood, the creation of a new neighborhood, just like Redwood Shores became a new neighborhood. With the central plan downtown, the work on that, Redwood City still remains at a a unique place. And and I continue to serve on the ad hoc Dunbarton Rail Corridor when that project was moving forward. Where there is and still remains, because of the wisdom of the people that were before us, bought the Dunbarton Rail Corridor right away. If that ever happens, there could be trains coming from the East Bay mainlining here in Redwood City to continue north or south on public transit. Talk about an opportunity for a mix of uses between public transit, housing, and more jobs. You know, what what anyone, if that plan ever comes together and that the the plan is created and development happens. Hopefully, the developers and the council expect and demand that those developers participate and help and put that infrastructure together to make that vision happen. So I think that downtown is a great example of success of bringing mixes of uses together with transit. And the opportunity for even more mixes of uses with more public transit exists in the future, and these things take time. Uh, Nancy co-chaired the Citizens Committee on the Downtown, I joined at the same time, that was in nineteen ninety eight, if I remember correctly. It's a twenty-year effort, so if we want to have that vision realized, we could not, number one, have to start with putting together a vision. And hopefully, maybe twenty years later, which we're talking maybe twenty forty, twenty fifty, that vision may occur. When we jump on the other side of one oh one, that's a whole different issue, because right now there aren't any services out there. There's no, not a lot of public transit, there are not a lot of community services. There's a lot of different things going on with a high degree of environmental sensitivity. And so there needs to be a way to study whether the status quo is the right answer and the only answer. Or that there may be an opportunity to do something else and something different in partnership with the private sector. I'm not gonna pretend I know what the right answer is right now, but it's an opportunity for discovery, and that we need to do that as a community. Um, people talk about sea level rise, it's very real, we live here and we haven't even talked about the levees. And we probably won't because we're out of time, but there is the real issue about sea level rise, and how do we pay for it? We've taken on, we know another conversation that's not happening, is who's gonna pay the national debt? It's gonna be our kids and our grandchildren, there's no question about it. How long, maybe even our great-grandchildren, I have no idea, because we're not talking about it. But we can't keep asking the taxpayers to pay for everything. And so we need to begin a conversation about what is the right thing to do out there? Uh, I mentioned the linear park when I served on the council, from downtown all the way to the bay. It was very obvious when you looked at it from fifty thousand feet, the opportunity. But there are other opportunities out there, and I'm not gonna pretend I know what the right answer is by myself, we need to do it together. Do it in partnership with the landowners, and we need to do it in partnership with the region. Because when we talk about sea level rise, the last time I checked with the bay waters, they didn't have any clue about where the city limit was. So we need to work together across San Mateo, Menlo Park, Redwood City, San Francisco, the landowners, the community, but is there an opportunity, is there an answer, what could it be? Because whatever that answer is, that will take probably thirty to fifty years to realize. Because anytime you touch water, it takes even longer to get anything done.
Great, thank you very much, so we're concluding our time for tonight with the forum. But I do wanna give each of you two additional minutes for closing statements, just so you could sum up your positions or your thoughts and reasons why you're um running for the council. So I lost track, who wants to go first?
See, would you like to go first?
Well, I thought it was your turn, Jeff, so.
I'm happy to defer to you.
Sure, I'll go first, what the heck, um, so I um I've been very involved in in Redwood City for multiple years. I so I, and I bring a lot of different perspectives to the table, which I think is very helpful, because we'll we'll be dealing with a lot of different things as we go forward. Um, as I mentioned, between, you know, business owner, renter, property owner. Um, nineteen years on the planning commission makes me very familiar with um good public outreach as well as bad public outreach. We've, I have to admit, we've done both. Um, uh, you know, extensive work on different nonprofit boards within the city. And um I'm very good at consensus building. And I know that the shores has taken great pride and and has fought very hard to be its own district. And I really respect that fact, and I really um respectfully asked for your vote and to go forward with making, continuing to make this the great city that it is, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, Jeff.
Thanks, Don, number one, thank you, Don, and the Community Association for hosting this forum tonight and asking some some very good questions, and number, more importantly, giving us the time to really dive into our answers. Um, I really do appreciate it, I'm sure Nancy does too. As a longtime resident who's grown up here, who's gone to the schools, there are different issues here on the shores. Um, we haven't even talked about the levees and the flood zone and the seclusion and how we need to work together on that. We've touched on the school districts, the youth leagues, the budget. You know, being a longtime resident, I'm not going anywhere. We've grown up here, we've chosen to live here, I'm not playing on dying, I'm not playing on moving. I board, we'll appreciate that, but we do need to work together with the other six council members to get things done. But our voice needs to be at the table on the Redwood Shores. That we cannot be forgotten, when a council member says, aren't or aren't we lucky to have our kids go to great, to great high schools, Woodside and Sequoia? You know, karma counts too, and so does even Redwood High School. Um, we need to have our voice at the table. With the public health emergency, community safety is at the forefront, the budget, the economic recovery, the social justice issues. We don't know what's in front of us even two months away, let let alone two weeks away, things could change quickly. And so what I believe I can bring to the table is my knowledge of the shores, my knowledge of how local government, regional government, as well as state and federal government works, to be able to pivot as we discover new information, new issues, new challenges. And as someone said to me when I first served on council, damn it, Jeff, you're just a pragmatist. Trying to be very critical of what I was doing, but I'm a problem solver. I'm known to get things done, that doesn't always make people happy. But we're in an emergency and a public health crisis, our families, our children, our youth, our seniors need to be taken care of, and we can't be waiting too long to get to solutions, to make sure they're safe and they're taken care of. Thank you for the time tonight, thank you for moderation. Thank you for the time tonight. Thank you for moderation. Thank you all for joining us. Be honored to have your support in November and looking forward to continuing conversations with the community. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Nancy, for all of your very thoughtful responses, you know, and, and my appreciation for recognizing RCA. And I always want to thank Councilwoman Gary, as well as Borgans for being here, and Chris Rasmussen, and slipping my mind here, our other candidate.
Isabel Chu.
Isabel Chu. Thank you. To forgive my, my lost memory there. And I thank all of you in the shores who are joining us on YouTube and just my deep thank and appreciation for all of you for being here tonight and just, you know, helping us know more about each of you and where you stand and helping us decide how Redwood Shores will be represented, as well as, you know, the impacts of the entire city. And I appreciate your time. With that, have a very good night, everyone. Take care.